Moving on to Article 18. Town meeting members, there was an amendment to this motion that you received in your email. There's also versions of it out at the Clerk's office. And it's just a simple modification that was voted in by the Select Board on October 30th, 2023. And it is that $3,500,000, not $3,100,000. So I will be reading it in since you received the modification before seven days. It is moved and seconded that $3,500,000 is appropriated to pay costs of engineering, acquisition, and installation of solar panels and solar panel canopies on or in the vicinity of the Lynch Elementary School, the school's parking lots, including the payment of all costs incidental related thereto. That to meet this appropriation, $300,000 shall be transferred from free cash and treasurer with approval of the Select Board is authorized to borrow $2,800,000 pursuant to general law Chapter 44, Section 7, Subsection 1, or pursuant to any other enabling authority. There's an issue with the... So actually, that's incorrect. It's not just the $3,100,000 that was changed to $3,500,000. It's also the authorized to borrow $3,200,000 versus $2,800,000. So let me begin again and reread it correctly. It is moved and seconded that $3,500,000 is appropriated to pay costs of engineering, acquisition, and installation of solar panels and solar panel canopies on or in the vicinity of the Lynch Elementary School and the school's parking lots, including the payment of all costs incidental related thereto. That to meet this appropriation, $300,000 shall be transferred from free cash and the treasurer with approval of the Select Board is authorized to borrow $3,200,000 pursuant to general law Chapter 44, Section 7, Subsection 1, or pursuant to any other enabling authority and to issue bonds or notes to the town therefore. That the town manager shall be authorized to have oversight of the project and in accordance with Section 4-2 of the Town of Winchester Home Rule Charter, the town manager shall have the authority to enter into contracts and approve payments with respect to the project. This requires a two-thirds vote of the meeting. On behalf of the Select Board, Ms. Michelle Pryor.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Good evening, everybody. So, wanted to show you, as you all have heard about the one... Hold on a second. Okay. There we go. Thanks, Matt. Thanks, Sam. Okay. So behind you is a fetching picture of the new Lynch School. Consistent with the Select Board's recommendation in March, we are encouraging the use of solar photovoltaic production to achieve net zero energy status in Lynch School and most of our new buildings. To achieve this, there are going to be three separate solar arrays at Lynch. One on the third-floor classroom, which is already part of the core design, more to be installed on the building's roof, and ground-mounted solar canopy. So looking at the picture, the parking, so parking canopies to cover the cars are on the far left, that's where staff parking will be, and the solar panels on the roof are the areas outlined in red. The design of this building is what MSBA approved, and the core budget does not include the cost for those additional canopies on the roof and over the parking, because at the time we put this through to MSBA, I think it was assumed that the town would enter into a power purchase agreement to lease the solar panels from a third-party vendor, similar to what was done at VO and WHS. However, in the core budget, there is $800,000 to ensure the structural capacity of the roof to actually bear the load of those solar panels. And, as I mentioned, there is a solar array on the third-floor classroom. There's additional work to be done to get the site ready for any type of solar, which is some work in it for parking canopy bases, drainage, and conduits. That's estimated at $500,000. As we just mentioned with the revised motion, the original estimate that we had, which was in your motion book, had a full estimated cost of $3.1 million. Upon the completion of 100% construction design documents... Whoops. Jeez, this is sensitive. That revised estimate was $3.5 million. A little bit later in the presentation, you'll see a cost-benefit slide. So what was communicated to you as read by the moderator is $3.5 million, of which we're proposing to use $300,000 in free cash and borrowing the rest. Additionally, the memo that you received dated October 31st said that we expected bids to come in from construction bidders on November 17th. As of last week, that deadline's now pushed to November 30th. So why is that important? We don't know the actual costs, and we won't know the actual costs before we finish town meeting. We won't know until the end of the month. But we're going to go with what we have and explain what we still see as the benefits of owning the panels versus leasing the panels. So what's changed? The Inflation Reduction Act of 2022 made federal investment tax credits available to municipalities if the solar arrays are owned and operated by the town. Previously, those credits were only available... were not available to tax-exempt entities. So the PPA provider could claim it, homeowners could claim it, taxpayers could get federal incentives. But as of 2022, the town can now get in that game. So as the Chair of another committee said when I presented on this, so the federal government's going to pay the town government. Yes, they will, and I don't make the rules, but I'm more than happy to get the money. The town hired an independent third-party consultant to work with us on estimates. She's available tonight if we need some additional questions that go beyond my knowledge. We convened a subcommittee, which had members of the Select Board, EFPBC, school committee, the town project manager, the town sustainability director, and an observer from the finance committee to look at the estimates, the assumptions, the timing of the bids. We've met at least a half a dozen times since June to look at the ongoing sort of changes in cost, changes in estimates, potentially options on how to get the drainage built and all those types of things. So it wasn't just Select Board, it was a bunch of us. And as I said on our last call last week, I'll miss them all when we don't meet as often as we do. So that's what's different for us. We have a chance to actually receive the benefit of that tax credit. And I'll show you exactly how much that is. So why buy versus lease? We've always leased thus far. By owning and operating, the town gets the tax credit, which is 30% of the cost of the panels, or roughly $800,000, to offset the cost of installing those panels. We avoid paying energy that we would otherwise need to purchase back from a PPA provider. And we receive a discount on any excess energy, which if we have a sunny July and August, we would actually think we would generate more through solar than we would normally in normal use. Fewer kids in the school, potentially smaller, you know, fewer programs, excess energy, we get a credit in our tax bill. It's an opportunity to actually invest capital dollars to offset our operating budget. And I think for anyone at town meeting that doesn't, isn't aware of this, energy comes out of the municipal budget. All of the school's energy is paid for on the municipal side. So right now, the tax bill, I'm sorry, the energy bill for the lights and the heat comes out of municipal. If we have solar and it pays for itself in seven to eight years, we basically get nearly free energy from our own building versus leasing our roof to a third-party and buying back the energy that our own building generates. And in borrowing, it's fixed debt spread over a finite term of borrowing, which presents a predictable cost against what could be a very volatile cost of other energy. So if we leased it and energy costs went up, we're paying more. If we pay down the debt at a fixed rate, once it's paid for itself, the energy is ours. It's no longer volatile, it's predictable. So leasing presents a higher upfront cost, no upfront cost and discounted power. Ownership is a larger upfront cost, but a bigger year-over-year impact. Predictability from our perspective equates to lower risk for the town on its operating pressures and its energy budget. So investing a modest amount of free cash now and borrowing the balance will allow us to avoid energy costs for at least 25 years, if not more. It makes financial sense, and it's a hedge against what could be volatile future energy costs. And if the estimated cost of the solar panel is less than $3.5 million, and some indications might be, the amount borrowed will be reduced. So Thursday night, we talked about articles coming in and borrowing authorizations needed to be adjusted because we hadn't asked for enough. So Articles 7 and 8 had borrowing adjustments going up. Article 21 in your consent agenda, which we just voted in block, actually gave back $750,000 in borrowing authorization that we didn't need. So if we don't need $3.2 million, we won't borrow $3.2 million. But again, we won't know until November 30th, and we're not going to ask everybody to come back on December 1st to get those numbers. So how do our current solar panels do? So behind me are production for the first two years of operation for VO, DPW, and the high school. VO and DPW are exceeding estimates by 11%, 7%, and the high school is slightly below production estimates. What does that mean? Maybe our estimates were right. What is, maybe our production is, you know, it's particularly sunny at VO. But what we've seen is that generally, solar panels do at least as well as we would predict. We have experience in doing so. They produce right now excess energy in two out of three buildings. So if that were to happen at Lynch, any excess energy that the building doesn't need actually gets credited to a future energy bill. We actually get an offset on the next month's bill. So this year, with a rainy July, who knows? But this is where we were for the first two years of measuring. Here is an economic summary prepared by Beacon Integrated Solutions. Couple of items to note. We would plan to finance this two years with short-term bands and then bond for 13 years, so 15 years of borrowing. You have $3.2 million, which assumes in the first column, with a 3.2 at the top, assumes $300,000 of use in free cash to lower the borrowing. However, we could also borrow the full amount. The investment tax credit is the $892,000, or 30% of the cost of the panels. There is some construction capital and upfront costs, either doing the groundwork if we had a PPA or putting our free cash in. And the net benefits are higher for ownership than for leasing. So our consultant did do a net present value calculation, though, and so you'll see they're red on the PPA side, which is the far right. They're also red on the ownership side. It's difficult to estimate what future cash flow will be when you're cost-avoiding energy. We're not getting payments back from ever-source or our energy provider. We're just paying less over time. So you'll see there's operations and maintenance that we will likely outsource to a third-party. We don't anticipate adding this to DPW's workload. We will likely outsource that. There's insurance costs that are also baked into our costs. But we still see estimated benefit in the hundreds of thousands of dollars by owning versus leasing. So the last thing, this is where, if it builds for us, Matt, we'll see, right? So we recommend favorable action on direct purchasing in Article 18. We'll achieve our net-zero building. We'll achieve a net-zero building whether we lease or we buy. Try that again. The borrowing is paid through our operating budget. This is important to note. This is not a debt exclusion vote that we're asking for. There'll be no associated tax increase. We're not using the capital stabilization fund. We're asking to use a modest amount of free cash to lower the amount that we borrow, and our free cash currently stands at $20 million. And we see the benefit with predictable debt payments and reduced annual energy expenses. It's an asset that will pay for itself, that we'll get a benefit of versus the third-party. So we recommend and certainly encourage you favorable action on our article. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. May we have a recommendation from the school committee?
Madam Moderator, town meeting members, the school committee voted unanimously favorable action on this warrant. Thank you.
Thank you very much. May we have a recommendation from the finance committee?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. FinCom recommends favorable action on Article 18, which we describe as the town purchase of the solar panels. As our custom, we try to give the rationale for and then some of the rationale against. The rationale for is that the FinCom's majority preferred Option 18 vis-à-vis Option 19. The logic behind that is a reduction in the long-term O&amp;M costs, and Select Board member Michelle Pryor makes the case very well. She made that case very well to finance committee. We also think that one of the things that we need to spend a little more time focusing on is the long-term costs that follow construction, the long-term operation and maintenance costs, which is, as I mentioned a couple meetings ago, is 87% of the cost of owning a building is what you spend after you get it, when you first construct it. So this is an effort to focus on the long-term operations costs, and we commend the attention on that issue, which we think is consistent with the charter. The rationale against 18, expressed by some of our members, is that approximately $2 million, and as I think Ms. Pryor would recognize, it's $2 million plus or minus, you know, and we don't really know the exact answer yet. But that money could be used to, for other purposes, to address the capital crisis. We could preserve more borrowing capacity and some, from free cash. It might allow for earlier starts of other projects. And if we're looking at a sizable override in the next year, it might reduce the value of that override. But overall, the finance committee is in support. Eleven in favor, one, sorry, two opposed.
Thank you. May we have a recommendation from the EFPBC?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. The EFPBC recommends favorable action on Article 18 to support direct purchase. And I want to thank the moderator, who's also agreed to give me a little time to tell you that we also recommend tonight favorable action on 19, because they're related to the same endgame, which is net zero. And I appreciate Madam Moderator has allowed me to just take a moment to explain to you why that is. The EFPBC, to put a finer point on it, we're not recommending favorable action on 18 or 19. We're recommending a vote yes on both. And the rationale is this: Article 18, that obviously we're talking about now, does not obligate the Select Board to do anything. It's a borrowing authorization should they choose to move forward with direct ownership. Similarly, Article 19 obligates the board in no way. It's an authorization for them to enter into a contract up to 30 years. Want to make the observation that a month ago, when the board first voted on direct ownership, they were in favor four to one, based on cost estimates that came from 90% drawings. And that's how the warrant was printed, and it's the reason why there's been an update that Ms. Pryor shared with you. Two weeks ago, cost estimates came in, and the cost was a little higher. The board still supports direct ownership, though this time by a three to two vote. The board had some very meaningful, lengthy conversation, and analyzing those numbers, you can appreciate the more expensive the project, the further you go out with red ink before the ink turns black. They've done a great job of this. While there are many people, individuals, who have been working with that task force since the spring to help evaluate this, no public body has spent more time discussing this issue and evaluating this question than the Select Board. Their consultant, Beth Greenblatt, has done a tremendous job in their many meetings. You may have read about him in the newspaper. And so there's great confidence that the EFPBC has in the Select Board in making the decision they feel is really in the best interest of the town. So that brings me back to my comment that I made under Article 1, and the comment Ms. Pryor just said a moment ago about schedule. This is a dynamic process. I shared with you last week under Article 1 that GC bids were going to come in on the 27th. Well, guess what? We got requests to extend the bid date. I don't want to force a general contractor to give me a number they're not prepared for. We want contractors to be sure their numbers are good, and we don't want them padding their numbers. So the EFPBC voted last week on Wednesday to extend the bid date until the 30th. That's a reflection of how competitive the climate is. As hard as the Select Board has been working on these numbers, they're based on estimates. The numbers that really matter are the bids. And we don't have them yet, but they're coming very soon. So the recommendation from the EFPBC is to vote yes on 18 and 19, show trust in the Select Board to make the decision that's in the best interest of the town when those bids come in. The hope, of course, is that when the bids are open, they are at or below the numbers that Ms. Pryor just provided. If those numbers should come in higher, and there's always a chance that that can happen, there's always a chance, if town meeting has not authorized Article 19, then we've sort of cut off that second path towards net zero, and we postpone that conversation until the spring. So I think the Select Board has done an amazing job. Hope you vote yes on 18 and 19. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe we've heard from all the boards and committees who wanted to give recommendations to town meeting on this article. Any questions or comments from town meeting members?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I'm going to wear two hats. My name's Josh Behrs.
Oh, can you please provide your name for the record?
Yes, Josh Behrs. My first hat is as a member of the Climate Action Advisory Committee, and my second hat is as a town meeting member, Precinct 7.
Thank you.
So with my first hat on, just wanted to say that the Climate Action Advisory Committee had a unanimous vote in support of solar panels on Lynch. And it's really consistent with goal number one of the town's climate action plan, 2020 Climate Action Plan, which is to reduce greenhouse gas emissions by the town by 80% by the year 2050. And just to give some numbers to what the Lynch projected greenhouse gas reduction would be, would be about 532 metric tons of carbon dioxide averted by having those and achieving net zero for the school. The second benefit that we see is an educational one. It's on a school, great place for kids to learn about solar energy. My daughter, who's a third grader at Lynch, did a science project last year about the solar panels that we have on our garage roof. So I think there's great opportunities for education. And finally, leading by example, this is a municipal building. Our greenhouse emissions sadly by the municipal is only about less than 4% of, with the town limits, so, but a great place to start and set an example for residents as well. So, yep, that's... Thank you, Madam Moderator.
Thank you very much. My apologies to the Climate Action Committee. Your moderator was uninformed that you were going to give a recommendation, but thank you for sharing your voice. Further on the question?
Yeah, Peter Scheim, it's Precinct 5. Just a quick question. Is this, this project is not eligible for SMART funds?
To the Select Board, is this project eligible for SMART funds?
Yes, it is, Peter, and I forgot to make that note. It is. It's on the chart. It is eligible for SMART funds, which is Solar Massachusetts something program. Yes. So and the deadline to get approved for that is December 31st of this year. So time is of the essence to apply. As the owner, we would get those SMART payments, and yes, it is both federal tax credit and SMART program eligible. I forgot to say that. Thank you.
So just to follow up for the town, that means you get paid for production, you defer your energy costs, and then you get paid for what you produce. So you get another 11 cents, so it's half of, half of the price of the electricity is what you get.
Thank you.
The SMART is SMART. All right. Seeing no other town meeting members rise, I believe we are ready for the vote. It is a two-thirds vote, and it is to authorize appropriate, it is appropriate money. So at this point, I'm just going to use our clickers real quick. We might as well check to also make sure they work and to make sure we get that fully A vote in the affirmative means that you would like to appropriate money for the acquisition of the solar panels at Lynch Elementary School. A vote no means that you would not like to appropriate money for acquisition of the solar panels at Lynch Elementary School. Two-thirds vote required. As a reminder, this is a borrowing. Part of it is used for free cash, the other part is for borrowing. Any town meeting members with issues with their voting? Seeing no one rise. There are 141, 151 members voting, 101 required for adoption. There are 147 in the affirmative, four in the negative, and the motion has passed. So your moderator's been informed that the FinCom would like to convene and discuss Article 19 before we take it up. And it's almost 8 o'clock, so I'm actually going to let us break so they can do that during our break and not hold up our meeting. We're going to take 15 minutes. You are welcome to stand around the FinCom if you want to hear them debate. Article 19. Otherwise, please go visit the Girl Scouts and enjoy stretching your legs. Thank you. I brought the gavel just in case. All right, let's get going. So we are moving onward to Article 19. Thank you so much for breaking a few minutes early so that FinCom could debate. Article 19 is on page 25 of your fall town meeting motion and background booklet. It is moved and seconded that the town vote to authorize the Select Board to enter into a power purchase agreement for a period of up to 30 years for the purchase of the solar energy generated by a facility to be constructed upon or around the Lynch Elementary School located at 10 Brantwood Road in Winchester, Massachusetts. On behalf of this article, it's being sponsored by the Select Board, we have Mrs. Pryor.
Hi, I'm Beck. Still solar. Parking is on the left, the roof is in the middle. So Article 19 authorizes the Select Board to enter into a lease with a third-party, so power purchase agreement, PPA, lease with a vendor, the duration of which needs to be negotiated, but it's typically 20 or 25 years. In such a lease, like we have at VO and the high school, the vendor agrees to sell electricity to the town at a discounted rate, maybe 15% below market rate. Again, that's negotiated for the duration of the agreement. So we sign a lease for 20 or 25 years. That's kind of industry standard. 15% below the market rate is what we think we're getting, what we're getting now in our other solar arrays. The vendor purchases and installs the panels on the roof and the parking lot canopies and connects the infrastructure that the building that our Lynch project has already created. So they have to tap into what's there underground, all the electrical work that's laid out for them. It's important to note, the town will still own the array on the third-floor classroom. We talked about that in Article 18, that there's part of a solar array as core to the Lynch project. And a PPA, the vendor gets the federal investment tax credit, not the town, but the vendor gets the SMART, like Peter mentioned. The vendor maintains and operates the panels. And while there are some changes in electricity transmission charges could be passed on to the town, but the discount remains. So there's a little bit of volatility potentially in those energy charges as costs are passed through to the PPA vendor, they pass it back to the town. So why should we give you Article 19? It gives us the flexibility to enter into a long-term lease if it makes financial sense. We haven't had, we don't have the details yet, as Mr. Nixon said. If we somehow find that our $3.5 million estimate is understated or grossly below, I think we would look at negotiating a PPA or seeing what kind of rates, what kind of terms we can get with a PPA provider. But we won't know those costs until November 30th. Article 19, a favorable vote on 19 gives us the flexibility to do a lease if need be, but it's our preference, and it sounds like it's your preference, to own the solar panels outright. So thank you for considering Article 19, and those are all my slides. I think I said it all before. Thank you, Madam Moderator.
Thank you. May we have a recommendation for the school committee?
School committee recommends favorable action for the reasons stated.
Thank you. May we have a recommendation from FinCom?
Thank you, and thank you, thank you, Madam Moderator. Thank you for the patience. We had voted favorable action on Article 19, but we had understood them to be in the alternative. So we voted favorable So we voted favorable action 12 to zero a week or so ago, but it was on the assumption that Article, if Article 18 was not approved by Town Meeting. So the reason we, then the rationale is the same as we discussed before, to save, save the money. If we do a PP, PPA, then we have, we have, we're saving that two-plus, two-plus or minus million dollars for other things. What we did not vote until just three minutes ago was what would happen if, what is FinCom's position on giving Select Board the authority to do either 18 or 19? And we just voted on that. The vote was seven to six in favor of proceeding with Article 19 and giving that authority to the Select Board. The arguments, the arguments against, it's a very close vote, the arguments against are that the Select Board should follow through and follow through with the ownership proposal that the Town Meeting has already voted. I don't know, I think it was almost unanimously in Article 18. And the argument against is that should conditions change, the Select Board should be entitled to make the appropriate decision and given the authority to move in either direction. Thank you.
Thank you. May we hear a recommendation from the EFPBC? Kind of already touched base on this, but if you could just...
You've heard from me a lot already, so I'm not going to repeat myself. But we, obviously, we do, we support both for the reasons stated. The numbers that matter the most are the numbers that you get when you open the bids. Everybody who's been involved in this process since March has been hopeful that the bids are going to come in at or below the estimate. But there's always the chance that they don't. And we don't want to be stuck. The alternative is if the costs come in considerably higher, purchase makes, no more makes sense for the Board. We don't want to be talking about this at Spring Town Meeting, because we've just postponed for another six months identifying who our partner is, and there's a lot of project coordination involved. So it's just about giving them the authority should conditions warrant.
Thank you. Did the Climate Action Committee have any recommendations?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Josh Behrs, Climate Action Advisory Committee. And intentionally, I didn't say we supported 18 or 19, because we support solar. Either way, we save the 550 metric tons of carbon. So that's...
Thank you. At this time, any Town Meeting members with questions or comments on Article
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Pamela Court, Precinct 5. Through the moderator to Town Meeting, I support a no vote on Article 19 for the same reasons that Dr. Miller stated, that some of our FinCom members were against voting in favor of it. Having watched some of these Select Board meetings in person, I'm uncomfortable with the quality of debate. We had an almost unanimous decision supporting the purchase of these. They went from a four to one vote in support of purchasing to a three to two vote. And if the will of Town Meeting is to be honored, I personally don't feel comfortable leaving that at their discretion. So that's something to consider. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other further questions or comments? Seeing no one rise, I believe you're ready for the vote. We will use our clickers. A vote in the affirmative is to authorize the Select Board to enter into a power purchase agreement. This is not binding. Town Meeting is not forcing them to do it. It gives them the option. A vote no does not provide Town Meeting the option to enter into a power purchase agreement. A simple majority is required, as this is not a borrowing. This is just to go into I've been reminded that your vote will not register until the green light turns on. So if you hit it early, you didn't wait till the light turned green. For those who have their name on the first slide, just know your moderator has her name on the last slide, so I have to wait just like... All right. There is 125 in the affirmative, 30 in the negative. The affirmative has it, and the motion is passed.